Okay, the time is now five thirty. Good evening and welcome to the October thirteen twenty twenty-five Academic Achievement Committee meeting. I'm Jonathan Briggs, District Two Representative and Chair of the Academic Achievement Committee. It is a pleasure to welcome you to our meeting this evening. I hope everyone had a great weekend and is ready to get started for tonight. We're also pleased, I'm also pleased to have Dr. Judith White, Chief Academic Officer, Dr. Deanne Collins, Chief of Staff, and Dr. Latricia Gloucester, hopefully I didn't butcher that, Associate Superintendent of Innovation and Performance, who'll be leading tonight's presentation. For those unable to join us live, a recording will be available on the PGCPs YouTube channel and on the Diligent website. So with that, we can now proceed with roll call. Ms. Johnson, please call the roll.
Mr. Briggs?
Present.
Ms. Boozer Struther?
Present.
Mrs. Olivo?
Present.
Ms. Goins McCants? Ms. Ajakaya? Okay, we have a quorum.
All right, quorum is present. We're going to move on to the adoption of the meeting agenda. If there are no objections, the meeting shall, or the committee shall adopt the October thirteen twenty twenty-five meeting agenda. Okay, there being no objections, the meeting agenda is adopted. All right, so we're going to move on to approval of the committee meeting minutes. If there are no corrections, the committee shall approve the September fifteen twenty twenty-five meeting minutes as distributed. Okay, there being no corrections, the meeting minutes are approved. This evening, there are no registered public comment speakers, but I want to say as always that we want these meetings to be as accessible as possible for the public to hear your voices. We know that you're most impacted by the decisions that we make as a board. And so your voice is always welcomed, but with that not being, anyone being here to present on public comment will move to discussion items for this evening, which is Innovation and Performance. And I'll now yield to Dr. Judith White, Chief Academic Officer, to introduce Agenda Item six point one.
Good evening, everyone. It is a pleasure to be with you this evening. You've already mentioned I have the pleasure of being with our Chief of Staff, Dr. Deanne Collins, and our Associate Superintendent of Innovation and Performance, Dr. Latricia Gloucester. And based on our survey, you know that CSI schools was one of the hot topics that our community wanted to know about. So who better to come and present and share about the performance, the innovation and performance area? None other than Dr. Latricia Gloucester. She's going to talk to us tonight about bold structures and strategies for sustainable impact. So with that, I turn it over to Dr. Latricia Gloucester.
Maxi, Dr. White, I'm going to kick us off and transition to Dr. Gloucester.
Perfect.
Are the slides going to be posted, or you want me to go ahead and get started?
Taya? Okay, you want me to go ahead and just?
Great, that's perfect. So once again, thanks everyone for joining. My name is Dr. Collins. I'm the Chief of Staff, supporting this initiative along with Dr. Gloucester and our superintendent. So this evening, we wanted to make sure we could provide some clarity on the theory of action that's really driving the work with the Innovation Zone. Super excited to look at how do we transform outcomes for students and also support the community in a way that's most meaningful. We're going to give a high level overview, overview of the problem that we're trying to solve, talk briefly about some budget and financial implications of the work we're doing, highlight briefly some laws and policies, and then discuss some of the data sources that we'll be using to measure success. So I'll transition into really the theory of action that's driving this work. So I'll go to the next slide, please. So I'll start here and then I'll let Dr. Gloucester pick it up. But something that the superintendent and I have been talking a lot about with, and as we thought about the vision of the Innovation Zone, and we're so pleased that Dr. Gloucester joined us in this work, is every system is perfectly designed to get the results received, right? And so we wanted to make sure that while every district in Maryland has schools that are identified as low performing according to the state assessment system, which aligns to our federal guidelines, we also wanted to make sure that as we think about and operationalize the organizational culture, big rock in our district, that we enter that from a space of support. What does that look like for our schools that have not met the standard based on a state assessments? And how as a district, do we wrap our arms around the leaders, the teachers, and the families in those schools to really provide concentrated and strategic support to move outcomes for kids? And so that's where our theory of action began and where the work has evolved. So if the Office of the Innovation Performance Zone intentionally, and intentionally is key, right? Intentionally develops the leadership capacity of school principals in the CSI school, also known as Comprehensive Support Improvement Schools, and we'll talk a little bit about what that means, fosters the conditions for bold change, as Dr. Judith White mentioned, and transformational justice, and builds systems of accountability through systemic performance management. Then we will establish a sustainable culture of urgency that drives equitable accelerated improvement and results in positive outcomes for each and every learner. And so the work in this zone will be, it won't be that they're getting anything different than the other schools. It's just how we triage and support the schools in the zone in a way that help us to stay very focused and really focus on the supporting our leaders and our teachers and the community to drive outcomes for students. So as you transition to the next slide, I'll turn it over to Dr. Gloucester to continue the presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Collins, and good evening to all board members assembled and everyone here. I just want to echo first what Dr. Collins mentioned a few moments ago and focus on the quote around if every system is perfectly designed to get the results that it receives, right? So we recognize and understand that the premise of creating the Innovation and Performance Zone is to really have the heart and courageous conversation about all the great work that's happening, but how can we produce more equitable outcomes for each and every learner? And to begin to think about how we could be honest about what those systems are designed to do, and more importantly, what we can do to redesign it to get the different results that we know our students deserve. Dr. Joseph, our interim superintendent, has spoken a lot about the notion of what our data has already proven, and that is that our Black and Brown students are outperforming in growth other in their cohort throughout our state and in the country nationally. And so we want to be able to produce that to scale specifically with our state identified CSI schools. So as we look at the definition of taking a moment to understand what it means to be identified as a comprehensive school and improve, a comprehensive support and improvement school as identified by MSD. So schools receive this designation because of specific performance criteria outlined by the Maryland State Department of Education. So for elementary and our middle schools specifically, those schools are identified as CSI when one or more student groups, such as student with disabilities, our multilingual learners, our economically disadvantaged students, for example, perform at a lower rate than the five, than the lowest five percent Title I schools across the entire state. So I want to reiterate that so that we're all clear that any school that is identified as a CSI school is when at least one or more student group is performing at a level lower than the lowest five percent of all Title I schools across the state. And that is specifically for our elementary and our middle schools. For high schools, the criteria is very different. That criteria for high schools are designated for CSI if it has not graduated at least two thirds, or more specifically sixty-seven percent of its students based upon its four-year adjusted cohort graduation rate. And this trend has persisted over at least a two-year period. So those are two very distinct designations or identification criteria for our elementary and middle schools and our high schools. So whether the designation is due to a student group performance or the graduation rate, the message remains the same. And that is that our CSI schools, that these designations signal an urgent call to action, which is the premise of this Innovation Zone being created. It is a collective responsibility to accelerate learning for each and every learner, address any inequities or barriers, and ensure that each and every learner has access to high-quality transformational and transformative educational experiences. So if we can move to the next slide. So the vision for our work in the Innovation and Performance area at the heart of our work is clear and an urgent purpose. And that is to reimagine educational opportunity that drives equitable, rapid, and sustainable gains in student achievement across each of our twenty-four identified CSI schools. This means that we are not simply making incremental changes, but we are redesigning and supporting educational experiences for our students, for our families, for our communities who have historically been underserved. And again, it take, we have to engage in bold and courageous leadership to really name the thing so that we can move in a direction to eradicate that disparity. So we do this by cultivating courageous leadership in each of our school leaders. We are working very closely with our instructional directors and strengthening their capacity so that they can support our school leaders. We are advancing innovative practices. We have been working very closely with Dr. Judith White and her team with our special, Students with Disabilities, our Special Education Team, our PPWs. It is a collective effort to make sure that we are advancing our innovative practices. We are building performance-driven systems and structures that ensure accountability, coherence, and results that are measurable and both meaningful. You'll see that in a few moments. And then likewise, the center of our, of our work really around these pillars of innovation, leadership, performance, and whole child supports, we're creating collective impact to ensure that we're fostering academic excellence, holistic well-being for each and every learner, and sustainable improvement for our CSI schools. So if we move to the next slide, we'll begin to look at the research that grounds the premise of our work. So extensive research does confirm what we already know to be true, and that is providing equitable access to high-quality educational is not optional. We know that it is essential if we are serious about disrupting and eradicating generational patterns of underachievement by closing those opportunity gaps in our historically marginalized areas. So this includes our Black and Brown students, our, our multilingual learners, our students with disabilities, as well as those that are identified as economically disadvantaged. So what does this tell us? What do we do? We know that it tells us that equity is not an initiative. Instead, it is a discipline, a design discipline. So we are going to be working to intentionally build systems that deliver opportunity of excellence for each and every learner that, and we don't just improve the schools, we transform their opportunities and their futures. So if we can move to the next slide, you'll see here that we have our identified twenty-four CSI schools. They are a mix of elementary, middle, and high, as well as three K eights. We have three high schools and the remaining of our elementary schools. Those are listed in clusters four, or clusters A, B, and C from your vantage point. Cluster D, which is our cluster seventeen, is a cluster of ATS I schools. We've identified those ATS, those nine ATS I schools because based upon their performance, there is a propensity that they could be identified in the twenty-five, twenty-six school year potentially as a CSI school. So our work has been intentional to be proactive with the intent to negate that, that option from occurring. So I'm going to defer back to Dr. Collins to talk a little bit more about the definition of how ATS I schools are identified and why this work of being proactive is so important.
Thank you, Dr. Gloucester. So just wanted to point out, if a school is identified as an ATS I school, that's an alternative type of school with low performance, it means that at least one student group is performing as low, as low as the lowest five percent in the state. So it could be, again, students with disabilities, multilingual learners, free and reduced meal students, but just at least one student group is performing as low, and then they can be identified as ATS I. And I often think about it as like, in plain language, CSI is, is sort of the low, and then ATS I is right on top. And so that's why Dr. Gloucester was saying we want to intentionally focus on ATS I because they are right at the cusp where they can go higher up or go, you know, drop down to a CSI school. The other thing that I wanted to point out is that if you notice in each of the clusters, there are eight schools. And the research is very clear. If you want to support and build leadership capacity, the, on average, the number of schools that an instructional director or the research calls a supervisor, a principal supervisor should have is close to ten schools. If you can get less than that, that's great. On average, most of the instructional directors on the, on the high end in the district have had like twenty-four schools. In some districts, it could be fifteen, it could be twenty. So the fact that each instructional director has only eight schools is another example of how we're trying to be much more targeted and strategic so that the amount of touch and support in terms of coaching and leadership that an instructional director can do is happening more frequently than if they had way more many schools. You can transition to the next slide. Oh, and Dr. Gloucester, if you want to add something, please do.
Yep, if we could go back to that slide, I would love, again, for you and perhaps even Dr. White to extend this point as well. To the point that our instructional directors only have eight to nine schools, it does allow our touch points to be more intentional as well as increased. And so subsequently, because we are partnering and working very closely and collaboratively with our, the Curriculum and Instruction Office, the Office of Title One, our PPWs, this allows their touch points to be more intentional with such schools as well. So we're very grateful for that partnership with Dr. White where we are looking at potential ELA coaches, mathematics coaches, multilingual learners, or instructional specialists in those areas, all special education, because we know those are our big rocks. That will help our, and support our school leaders in really touching, having touch points with our teachers during professional learning communities, during collaborative planning, even doing model lessons, to really be clear about how to move their big rocks identified in their school performance plans specifically to, to exit, that exit strategy from being identified as a CSI school. That is really the purpose and premise and work of our work, right? Is to really be clear, that's the work we've already began with our principals, is to be clear about an exit strategy. Being identified as a CSI school, we have shared with them, is not a life sentence. There is possibility for growth. We know that growth is already happening. We want to be able to memorialize that through the work that they're already doing, but we know we can't do that heavy lift alone. So the partnerships that we're having across all of the different departments collaboratively in the district allows us to be intentional to focus on focus as well as to push in a manner that's more intense specifically in those schools. And so I'll pause and defer to Dr. White and/or Dr. Collins around that work.
Yeah, I would just say that I think the smaller numbers allows you to really build for sustainable practice. So in these schools, it's about how do you, you know, take what you have and look at your subgroups. And based on the support staff that you'll have wrapped around, you have a good chance to really be intentional with how you support the different subgroups.
That's perfect, because, I'm sorry, Dr. Collins.
No, I don't have anything to add. I think we covered it.
And so our principals, as they've created their school performance plans, as they've done in the past, were really being clear and targeted about which one or two, in some cases, three subgroups have impacted their designation. And so the goals that they've created for their own performance goals, as well as the goals for the school, are aligned. And so the push and the work that we're doing around the intentionality is very clear so that we are working toward that exit strategy. So we can move to the next slide. So our budget and data sources really do revolve around their designation. So we recognize that several of our schools, in many cases, have more than one budget. So they have been identified as a Title I school. They receive the Title I A, which is the CSI support resource. All one hundred percent of our schools are community schools, and then they receive support from just their basic stu, school-based budget. So our work and working with our Title I partners, Natasha Flood, with Chief Doug Strater and others, is really thinking about how do we leverage the data that we have to make informed decisions, to provide resources that directly impact those student groups to help our exit strategy. So it is a very complex but intentional strategy that we're leveraging to really be clear about our focus to support those student groups and to support our schools and the resources that they are leveraging in that work. Anything we want to add there, Dr. Collins or Dr. White?
I would just say, Board Member Briggs, so this is a conversation that we had around budget implications. And so you know that when many of the funds come into the district and you look at the schools here, and, and it's easy to say, what do they have? How are they, how are they spending? I think putting them in this Innovation and Performance Zone gives her a chance to really be explicit and deliberate to make sure that we're, we're leveraging the funds to the best way possible.
We can move to the next slide. So in our first quarter, our first launch, we are still building and launching the office. We currently have myself, we have four instructional directors, we've been working with the, with Dr. Reese and others to really help us focus on our focus. So our starting point has really been around talent management, leadership development, and leadership coaching and development. So I want to pause here because on the left of your screen, you'll see our, our framework that we have adopted from our partners with the University of Virginia, the Partnership and Leadership in Education. It's out of the Darden School of Business. And what they do, they have created this, this framework, if you will, that allows our principal supervisors, our instructional directors, to focus on four specific levers. We know that by focusing on these levers, not just the IDs, but as a system, this will support us accelerating the support in each of our schools. So those four levers are systemic or systems leadership, support and accountability, talent management, and the instructional infrastructure. The good news about our, our school system is that we have very tight systems that already exist. We have a very strong instructional infrastructure led by Dr. White, where we have curriculum, we have pacing guides. They work closely with Dr. Strater around our assessment strategy. So a lot of those pieces are already in place and allows us to push and to lead in a manner to support our work. Our goal and our focus is to create a system where we can, as Dr. White mentioned a few moments ago, create more sustainable practices at a more intense level. So our work this year, this, this first quarter has truly been around talent management and thinking. So as we think about how the Office of Innovation and Performance is approaching school improvement, specifically around our CSI schools, this slide really captures what's truly different about our work. So we're not just recycling old strategies or relying on, you know, compliance-based checklist. We are looking at being compelling. We are implementing a model around strategic acceleration that is deeply rooted in transformational leadership and systems design. So there are four levers, as I just mentioned moments ago, serve as the foundation around how we are intentionally building leadership capacity, strengthening systems of support, and that push of acceleration performance across our most historically underperforming schools. If we can move to the next slide. That concludes my portion of the presentation. Dr. Collins, I turn the floor back over to you or to Director Briggs for any questions.
Great, thank you. That concludes our presentation, and I will turn it to Mr. Briggs.
Okay, thank you so much. So the floor is now open for discussion. Colleagues will have two and a half minutes each, and I ask that you raise your hand. I'll of course acknowledge you in the order of your raised hand. If for whatever reason you can't raise your hand, just come off mute and let me know, and I will have you in queue in the order that I see. So any questions? Okay, Board Member Goins McCants.
Good afternoon, and thank you, Chair Briggs. My first question, just trying to get some understanding. I saw, where we saw the breakdown of the funding and all of that for how we're going to provide all of these wonderful supports to our schools. Is there any additional funding that is coming outside of those buckets? Or roughly speaking, is that all of the money that we are putting towards our Innovation Zone?
I can answer that. So pretty much all of those buckets is where we're pulling the money. One of the discussions that we've been having across the district over the past two months is looking at how we can be more efficient with all the buckets of funding, but also support the leaders together, like kind of getting in a room together, right? And looking at, you've got community schools money, you've got Title I money, you've got CSI money. Where is there overlap and where can we, it's called grading of the funds and not getting trouble with supplanting so that we can use them more strategically. And so that's why, for example, with the positions, for example, that are already in the Office of Academics, that's coming from our, our normal standard, you know, district funding sources, right? So that, but however, some of the other resources, additional positions that might be Title I funded, such as like a leadership coach or a math coach, those would come from those other buckets of money. And all of those plans are submitted to the state when we applied for our funding. But the question you asked is great because it's one that is ongoing work in the district that we've got to do because we don't have any extra funds. The only other thing that I will say is our goal is also to potentially find some partnerships around some strategic initiatives that are tied to whatever the big rocks come out of our strategic plan. So let's say STEM, for example, becomes a priority for the district. We would love to find some partners that can pour in money to do that amongst these schools.
And then in the balance of my time, the other question related to that was how are, how is that money still flowing as these schools change, since they're tied to their designations, right? And is ATS I also a yearly designation in Maryland?
So ATS I schools are identified every three years. With the ATS I schools, each district receives money and they can set aside, they have to determine based on the number of schools and the per people allocation, how much they want to send aside. But to your point, it's something that we've always got to think about, right? Because let's say a school is no longer designated. We don't want to just pull all the support that was there because then it may do something to the structures and systems. So in the, in the realm of school improvement, we've always got to be thinking, in the absence of this funding, what is the return to our investment, right? And what would we need to advocate to use these dollars with our local money in the absence of Title I funding? And as a former Title I principal, I can say that those are the tough conversations that you have to have. But if you co-create the strategy with the community, you can identify those things that are just part of the culture that become non-negotiables. So that's a great question.
And then, if you can, thank you so much. If you can pull up the timer for the discussions, I think that's going to help us to be, just be on.
Sorry, it wasn't running. It just wasn't displaying, but it'll, it'll display next time.
Board Member Boozer Struther?
Yeah, thank you. My question, you started, I think, touching on it when you started to talk about the external supports, but I would, I have a couple of questions, and I'll start with that one is around, how will the individual family or parents of each of these schools experience this differently to know that, they'll know that something has changed? You know, you, you reviewed, you know, how these, the systems difference, and I was wondering how that. And I was wondering how that will be obvious collectively as the parents of the school, but also individually. Will parents start to have higher engagement that teachers are coming to them instead of us going to the teacher? Or, you know, I mean, those types of differences that they could say throughout the year, this that, something, something has changed. I could feel how we are, I could see how we are helping my child succeed. So that's one question. And the other is the um, staffing plan. So if there's instructional directors with just clusters of eight, does that, did we, uh, and I apologize, I know we do, do the ultimate hiring. Um, did we expand in instructional directors or there instructional directors who now have a bigger group of schools assigned to them? So I just wanted clarity on those two items. Thank you.
Dr. Gloucester, those are two good questions for you. I'll, I'll let you answer.
Oh, I was trying to come off mute. Uh, so for the first question around how families will experience this differently, I'm so excited you asked that question. I actually just had a conversation with my team, um, and members of cabinet and actually with David Reese. We'll be partnering very closely with uh, our community schools, uh, department, where we're going to model very similar to the work that Dr. Joseph has created around the parent listen and learn sessions and uh, model that around just by clusters. So the cluster of schools, while they aren't necessarily feeder patterns, we want to create opportunities specifically for our, our families and our community and our partners to be a part of it, to hear their voice and to really de-stigmatize the notion of what it means to be a CSI school, but to rather strengthen our supports, um, combined with the pa- parents and families that will receive. So to your point, and I'll be brief, it's not just us coming to them, but they feel safe to have those conversations with us so that we can increase the, the supports and su- and the capacity of student achievement and growth. And I didn't get to the second question because time is up.
We'll have a second round, Dr. Gloucester, and I, and then I want to or to, uh, Board Member Boozer Strutter for that. Um, Student Member Ajayat? Okay, I'm going to say Ari and you're going to correct me every time. I need to see the spelling, but for right now, I'm going to say Ari, um, and you'll correct me next time.
Thank you so much for this wonderful presentation. I have two really quick questions. So, um, I know the first, well, my first question is, I wanted to know like the signs or trends that I noticed like before a school becomes a CSI school. Because I know in the presentation you touched on like what makes a school a CSI school, which is like when specific groups in the um, school, like whether that's multilingual learners or, you know, other groups, they fall below like the five percent inside of the county. But I wanted to ask, what are some signs or trends that are noticed before a school is placed on a CSI school list? So that we can, you know, make a plan, I guess, to nip it in the bud at that specific time versus them getting to be a CSI school. And then you have to like, you know, work on the plans to get them out or get them as a exited CSI school.
Thank you, Director Airi. Um, it's good to see you. We met a few months ago back at the whatever it was. Um, the beginning of school moment at the Sports Learning Complex, but that's such a great question. Using trend data is imperative for us because it allows us to be um, proactive around identifying which schools could possibly land in CSI. I think that's the premise of your question. So some of the trends that we look at, uh, we do look at MCAP data, um, the Algebra One Assessment, the Bio Assessment, for example, at the high school, we look at those pathways. We also look at, um, if a school's graduation rate is trending downward closer to that uh, seventy or that sixty-seven percent, um, that's, that becomes a red flag for us to really be intentional to begin thinking about, okay, uh, you know, how many of our ninth graders, our traditional ninth graders are being promoted with their, with their original cohort, right? So we don't want to have a, you know, a third-time ninth grader that isn't on track to graduate with their original cohort. We want to make sure that they're already on track with that. So that is another trend that we look at. We also, a really huge bucket is our chronic absenteeism rate. We know that if students are not present, they aren't receiving the high-quality education that we know that they deserve. So we're really looking closely and working with our PPWs to make sure that our students are coming to school because what we can control is what they receive once they're there. So we're really looking closely at our chronic absenteeism rates to help with that, that piece as well. Um, there are other trend data that we look at, uh, but those are two or three big rocks that we really focus on.
Really quick, Board Member Briggs, the other thing is our Summer Leadership Institute. Uh, we worked with the Department of Accountability and we worked with all schools. Schools were able to bring a school team to learn about what's in a CSI plan, what those schools have to do. Because the more you can talk to other schools about what they're doing, you build their capacity through their um, performance plans to kind of hit those areas now and not wait until they would have some form of a designation.
Thank you so much. Uh, Board Member Olivo?
Thanks Chair Briggs. Um, actually, Dr. White just got to, um, I think started to answer one of the questions I was going to ask as far as, I understand that these clusters, you know, will share an instructional director. Is there also a real opportunity for the principals to meet regularly to share their own best practices and that sort of thing? It sounds like that answer is yes.
Yes, yes. They, we actually have one scheduled next week on October twenty-second. Uh, we'll be with them all day as an area and then they'll have time within their clusters. Uh, we're also mapping out as a team, providing them what we're going to call Community of Practice. Will there be practitioners in the work? Um, so you know, we can meet, we'll be meeting, uh, you know, virtually. Well, they'll have time to share their best practices, effective practices. Um, it'll be facilitated by our IDs, but the goal really is for them to provide their own problem of practice and for them to give each other feedback on um, opportunities uh, to, to strengthen the capacity of what's happening in their building. So the answer is yes and yes.
Thank you. And then, um, with my time remaining, my second question, or, or maybe this is a little bit more of a comment is, I think this also gets um, a little bit to the question that I had asked in our last work session about really making sure that we're using, you know, these additional funds um, that the schools qualify for based on, you know, various statuses, um, that we're really using those to meet the strategic needs of the
Well, Member Olivo, I think
White answered there about, you know, working directly with the principals to, oh, I'm sorry, did I cut out?
Cut out. You might want to just, the last maybe uh, ten, ten seconds.
Okay, so I'm, um, let's see, I know that Dr. White had answered at the work session about really working strategically with principals to make sure that they're using those funds to meet the needs of their schools and the strategic goals of their schools. But it sounds like some of that work will also be happening within these clusters and really specifically overseen by these instructional directors. Is that nice? He missed Dr. Gloucester shaking your head. So yes, that's also correct.
Yes, um, um, as I mentioned a few moments ago, some of schools have up to four bu- four bucket bodies resources, right? And so we want to make sure, um, first, we're strengthening their capacity around strategic financial management. That's one of our goals and really thinking about, you know, what are those designate, those pieces, the exit strategy? What are those um, student groups that identify them as a CSI school? And allowing us to create strategy around identifying resources. So there's, and then there's only one North Star, right? It, it, you know, they have their school per- in performance plan, they have their CSI plan, they have their performance goal, but they're all working toward the same North Star. And so by strengthening the strategic management um, strategy, this will, will support that work as well. So thank you for that question.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're in the first round. I think there might have been a second round, but I'll go really quickly for this first one. Um, I did have some questions and I feel like many of the board members have already asked in some capacity what I was going to say um, with slight variation. So there's a nuance and maybe if we can just like get to that part. Um, I did, I was curious. I like the question around trend analysis, like are there things that we're seeing across these schools? When we say there are disparities in the la- the lowest five percent of Title One schools? Uh, do you just have any like initial kind of, you know, highlights of like its attendance or its, you know, behavior or its academics or are, is it a combination of all those things?
Certainly. So I, I will reiterate that chronic absenteeism is a big rock, um, for a reason. Because we recognize that, um, in, in some of our schools, the chronic absenteeism rates are relatively high. And um, we want to make sure that we are working very closely with our principals. Um, we are working, we are looking at some of our schools now having weekly attendance meetings so that we are making sure students are coming into the buildings. Um, so that is a strategy that we're already implementing. Another piece that we want to, I want to name, um, we were just looking at our trend data this past week and we'll look at it again this week. Really is our, um, it's based upon those designations as our ML students and students with disabilities. Uh, we see that in mathematics and in ELA, and again, it's not an indictment, it's just really being bold about the courageous conversation, that in many of our schools, while we see growth, um, the, it's not growing at a rate to reach that, that metric of proficiency that's been identified by the state, right? Um, and so we know, whi- which is why those, those student groups have been identified as our um, strategic exit strategy. Um, because we recognize that while they aren't growing at the same rate, there's work to be done. And so our collaborative planning, our community of practice, all of those, you know, having those coaches come in to support, um, is really being intentional about accelerating and pushing in those areas. Um, so chronic absenteeism, our multilingual learners, our special educate, which is why all of those are big rocks identified by our interim superintendent because it directly aligns to the work that has to occur here in our innovation zone.
Slightly just for this last second, but I did want to say, I was also curious about how we're bringing, so I'll, I, you know, for me, it's like, uh, I, I appreciated the um, call to not just compliance orientation because the compliance is to meet us, to meet the goals, right? But if you said, your year as a household and you said, we need to meet this goal and then that process is no longer serving you, you go back and you revisit and say, we don't need to do this anymore because this thing isn't working. We're not just clients for the sake of being a compliance. So I really appreciate that. And I, I guess more of the human piece is, I guess my other thing is like, how are we bringing families in? Because when I think about this and I think about CSI schools, I appreciated the point that you were making that like families may say, well, number one, I can imagine they're like, what does this even mean? And then what's the long-term consequences? But then I think that it's the real consequences of how do families actually navigate this, right? Attendance might just be that we just are working multiple jobs and the kid is not, you know, provisioned for them, right? Or we don't have time, you know, the resources for summer enrichment programs or tutoring after-school programs because they need to work a second job when they leave. So how are we like, are, do we have in part of this plan and the UVA kind of intervention? I know family engagement, deep family engagement is like a lot of research behind it, right? How are we really bringing parents in as partners? Because that's what I hear a lot of from my constituents, like they want to be in the schools. And, you know, you may have some who are like time-poor, but they're like, if I can do something, these are my kids, I want them to have the best future possible.
Absolutely.
Do that. And is this a part of that plan? Um, you know, and how does, what does that look like for the people who may, you know, be curious and watching? Like, what would that look or sound like?
So Dr. Gloucester, I can start a little bit. Uh, so Coach Air Briggs, um, your question is right on time. Actually, today we had our first systemic principals meeting and um, the thread for our, our parenting, uh, professional learning this year is parenting engagement. And we are doing a uh, study on powerful partnerships. And we talked about different types of schools. And so what's, um, in particular, these schools will be doing is analyzing, what is, what is my current powerful parent partnership program look like? What are the structures, systems? How are we welcome them in? Um, what does that look like on a database? Like, they have to analyze that and really look at, okay, what is it that we're actually doing? What does that look like? But, and then co-creating the plan with the families. It's not, um, coming up with a plan that they think is in the best interest of the families. It's rather, okay, we're going to bring you in to sit down with us or we're going to go out to you to a community center, right? And have this meeting, but it's co-constructed. And that's what, um, the research that we've been sharing and doing this going to be a year-long book study with our schools around, what does powerful partnerships with families truly mean? Um, for you and where are you on this trajectory? And also with the instructional directors that are assigned, that is one of their major focuses as well, right? So analyzing, if you said this, then do your say and your do match, asking those really tough questions. And as you know, like each school's context is different, so you have to attach it very differently.
Um, second round of questions. Are there any questions or follow-ups that weren't answered? Great. Um, Board Member Boozer Strutter?
Yeah, thanks. So the one follow-up on the instructional director staffing and how many s- if other instructional directors are taking on more schools for this group to have the eight um, is the other question. And then the, the other issue, I don't think we've touched on and that I think has been, it's something we as a board have been bringing up a lot this last year is the concept of shared leadership in our schools and the fact that our school-based management team policy has not been implemented um, throughout the system. And as a reminder, that includes the principal and the uh, leaders of the pe- of the, each of the unions in the building.
Yep.
And a parent leader and at high schools, a student leader. And one thing that we keep running into is that we could get ahead of issues if we actually had that group meeting and talking about issues and, and solutions and changes that need to be made, but that hasn't been happening. And then there's also shared leadership built into the pillars of community schools. And, and so I'm still concerned about that, I just don't feel like we've had any assurances that school leadership is going to fully embrace and adopt school-based management team concept. If you c- have to come back to the board and ask for this policy to change, that's another discussion. But there just isn't, that is just not even in the system. And will these schools possibly be a chance to re-engage a true school-based management team that meets regularly and has these voices of leadership in the building addressing all of these issues?
Certainly. So to answer your first question, I do know that, um, while four instructional directors did come into the innovation zone, uh, the other three areas, areas one, two, and three, their uh, portfolio of schools have not been heavily impacted. They still range between that twelve and sixteen uh, model. And so, um, to, to that extent, it hasn't been heavily impacted in that area. Um, to answer your second question, and I'll be brief, we are looking into two things because you talked about the school-based management team and you also talked about the community school pillars. Um, one of the reasons why we are looking into um, modeling what Dr. Joseph did around the, the listen and learn parent sessions is to do just that. Um, to kind of do like an, an audit of source where we actually receive voice from our parents to help us co-construct the needs of our parents and our schools. Our teachers are there. So collectively, their, their school performance plan, school improvement plan isn't just done in a silo unilaterally by the school leaders, but also has the voice of our parents and families. Because we recognize it cannot move, uh, which is why Dr. Collins talked about to even today, um, the, the, the book study that we're doing with all of our school leaders. So that's the premise of that. And then very quickly, finally around the school-based management teams, we are looking to re-engage that at our, in our um, innovation and performance schools. Um, during my time as a Title One principal here in Prince George's County, we did have school performance management teams. And um, it was, the model is precisely what you just named. It was our principals, our assistant principals, I had teacher leaders. Um, I had a central office or area office members, parents, where we all looked at uh, our data um, bi-weekly. And then we were able to use that to help us execute the school improvement plan, the school performance plan. So that work is um, work that we will be launching as we continue to create um, the, the, the Office of Innovation and Performance, but that, the more to come there, uh, but we are looking to do that work.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Board Member Olivo?
Thanks Chair Briggs. Um, I just wanted to um, make a comment or, or bring a topic up around the big rock of chronic absenteeism and also just really share, um, I think that we also, we need to obviously, kids need to come to school. At the same time, kids are going to be absent. They get sick, you know, we don't want them to come to school sick, right? Um, and I will share my personal experience with two different high schools in the county is that it is very challenging for the student to Is that it is very challenging for the student to get their absence excused. And have, you know, access to the work and then have that work graded because the teacher has then seen that it was a lawful absence. And so I wanna just, I guess, really emphasize that the issue of chronic absenteeism. Is both, you know, getting kids to come to school, but also that second piece of when they are lawfully absent. That we need to have the structures in place within the school, that those absences can be, you know, fairly easily recorded. Um, so that the kids do have the opportunity to complete their makeup work, that the teachers realize that the makeup work is allowed. And should be graded and there are just, you know, so many steps um beyond that. And, you know, and I will also share, um, you know, I have been the parent of a chronically absent student. Because, you know, he got whooping cough a couple of years ago, was literally out of school for two full weeks, right? And so, um, getting that letter kind of terrified me, to be honest with you at first. And then I realized, oh, actually, you know, I think he made unlawful absence. And that probably just was because it wasn't recorded correctly. Um, so it was all okay. But there just is a lot of nuance to this and I really, we need to make sure the systems are in place as well with the schools. Um, to have these recorded accurately so that the kids can do their makeup work and have that work, you know, recorded and graded as well.
Olivia, um, if I may, in fifteen seconds, I, I truly appreciate your comments as a parent. Um, I have a daughter, fifth grader in the system right now. Um, I have an older daughter who, you know, vulnerably does have special needs. And has been chronically absent every school year of her matriculation. Um, I certainly understand um what that, what that feels like to get that letter. It's like, you know, I'm a, you know, I send my child to school, but when she's ill, she, she can't go, right? Um, so, but what I do know is, you know, that's why it's so critical. That we have uh pupil personnel workers identified for each of our schools. And we've been working um with, with uh Dr. Faison and that team to really help us identify those uh team members. To be assigned specifically to our schools and then to begin to work and create uh weekly attendance meetings. So we know our students by name and we recognize and understand why they're actually absent, right? And, and I'm excited about the system. I mean, as a, as a parent, I could just email the system and say, my child is ill, right? Um, I could pick up my phone and do that. And so we wanna continue to encourage. And so those will be the kinds of conversations as we co-construct these parent plans uh with our community school partners at the schools. Those kind of issues we will begin to um reiterate so that they're clear that it's a partnership. It is not a gotcha, but a partnership. But I certainly um appreciate you naming that, just as a, as a parent to parent. That's a real issue. Thank you for that.
Thank you very much.
Indeed.
Yeah, thank you. And I, I just wanna, I guess, just really quickly before I go to you, Ari, um, say that I feel like. I, I guess it's because it's on my mind with what um board member Olivia was sharing, is that I think the challenge we have in the district is. We want, of course, we wanna be accommodating as much as we can be to the needs. But a lot of times there's this miscommunication of when we're being accommodating, people have expectations that aren't managed. And then they're like, you're not moving, you don't care because you're top of the problem. And, and we are a system, right? Like things don't move quickly and fast. And it's like, how do we walk that tightrope of managing that expectation? But also saying, we are working with you and we're on your team, because I just had that issue. So it's like, I, the chronic absenteeism thing, I think, is one where it feels bureaucratic in some way. And it's like, how do we, you know, really be honest with people and say like, it is, there are a lot of parts of that that just really are and we can't always do the best.
And, and I'll also take that back to um Associate Superintendent Faison. I'm actually having a grading and reporting committee meeting on October twenty eighth. And at that meeting, she's actually gonna be speaking about some hiccups and implications we have. Based on students absent and late work that she wants to bring before that committee so that she can have some input. And so I will also convey this conversation.
Thank you. Um, okay, uh, or student member of the board, Ari?
Thank you. So my last question, um, it's pretty brief. Um, I just wanted to know the difference between the clusters because I think my wifi kind of cut out like earlier. But why, what is the difference between cluster A versus like, you know, another school being put in cluster D or cluster C and B?
Excellent question. So the only cluster that's different is cluster D. Those nine schools are ATS I schools, so they have not been identified as a comprehensive support school yet. And the goal is to, for our work to be proactive so that they do not become a CSI school. Clusters A, B, and C, um, which are actually clusters four, thirteen, and fifteen. Um, are our twenty-four ATS I schools. There are eight schools in each of those clusters. And really and truly, we designed those clusters, we did the best we could by feeder pattern. Um, and just by area jurisdiction where they are. Um, so for example, in clusters C, um, you'll see District Heights, you'll see um Dawswell E. Brooks. You'll see um Francis Scott Key, I'm like District Heights, Francis Scott Key, Andrew Jackson, Samuel P. Massey. Drew Freeman, um, but then we have one off Crossland, right? So while Crossland is um on Allentown Road, most of those schools like District Heights, Francis Scott Key, they're in that District Heights kind of Capitol Heights area. So we tried to be um consistent in that way, um, so that when we do have cluster or um community of practice meetings. If they don't wanna meet virtually, they can just meet at each other's school with or without us, right? Um, but that was virtually the, the premise behind our, our reasoning behind that. Great question.
Thank you.
Certainly.
Okay. And then I think I'll, I might wrap up unless there's a need for a third round. But um, I, I just wanna say that, one, I wanna say thank you so much for the presentation and that it really is helpful. And I think you all always just are so thoughtful in how you present the information. Um, we continuously get better as a school district and I think that's apparent in the presentation. Um, my last piece was just around a few things demographically. I know that we talked about special education being, one, we have some big issues with special education that we're all aware of. I know that there's also some additional funding, I think almost twenty-six million additional funding requests coming from the Office of Special Education. At some point. And I had a question about implementation of this plan. Is that, is that being implemented this school year? Is this anticipation of next school year? Um, and then if that's not the case, when we think about those funds and those students who are already not being served because of the special education gaps we have, the teacher shortage. And the specialist roles that need to be filled, how are we considering that when we think about the budgetary pieces? Um, are they factored in? Is that something that needs further planning now that we know our financial or we're learning our financial constraints? Um, and then, um, and then I had a question around like comparison, like. I know it seems like we're always gonna have a lowest five percent of Title One schools, right? Because there's just, it's just a recyc- it's like a, you know, there has to be someone who's the low, the least. But how do we compare our lowest schools in comparison to other counties' lowest schools across the state? Um, and then this is the last question is like, is there any high dosage tutoring tied to this? I know that we talked about the plan of the different areas, um, and then also behavior, are there behavior models? I know that sometimes I'm just thinking practically, like you have a student who is like, this is, this is our kid. Boy, girl, this is our person that we're trying to address in these CSI schools, but they're never in class because they have behavior issues, right? They, the teacher is just like, I, I'm constantly sending them to some room or something. And how do we mitigate that? Like, is there a behavior kind of model that's tied to this in some way? Are we supporting schools with like just being stronger in teachers interventions in any way? So those are my questions.
Okay, so those are four questions with twenty-five seconds.
I'll answer special at it first.
Yeah.
So the, the, the request for special education was based on the sys- the system, not just these schools. Um, and that's based on the services that we know we must provide. Um, more so due to when you have more vacancies or when services cost more, we have to go out and receive services. So the students have their accommodations, it increases. So whether we had these schools in a zone, performance is what we need to do to make sure that we can pay out comp services. That we can make sure the students who've missed services are able to receive them after the fact. And then we can always come and um, Dr. Bowman and I, and talk more with this group in general, um, if you have more specific questions about that.
To answer your second question about how do we, our Title One or our CSI schools compare to uh a- across the, the state? Uh, we have not done a specific analysis around that yet. Um, so that's certainly information that we can begin to, to do. And share that back up with, with the board. Um, third, is there high dosage tutoring um connected to this plan? Excuse me, so that's connected specifically to each school's uh s- uh school performance plan. Um, which is also connected to um them doing an analysis of their student performance group. Um, so we haven't just said specifically, you know, everyone is doing a high dosage tutoring per se. Um, it, it should be connected to that, what the data is telling them, right? So there are schools that are doing that, um, there are schools that are not. But again, that's based upon, that's a strategy based upon what the data um has, has implied, based upon their analysis. And then finally, yep.
This isn't prescriptive. This is like, you have autonomy to say, what works for my particular situation? And then you can go do it, but we have a model that's just governing this or kind of providing structure to this process.
So it's hybrid, right? So some pieces will be tight, some will be loose. So, you know, the loose will be some of the strategies that we will, you know, based upon whatever the data is sharing with them. We want principals to have voice around, you know, they know the needs of their students, they know the needs of their buildings. And so that is a, that is a loose. Um, a piece that's tight will be um some of the coaching, feedback, talent management pieces. That we'll be working on. A tight will be the instructional infrastructure, um, in terms of the coaching. In terms of the PLCs and the collaborative planning pieces that we'll have. So i- it's a hybrid model. Uh, but again, specifically like a high dosage tutoring strategy, that's, that's a loose based upon what the data shares. And then finally, the behavior model, uh, we have not dug in specifically into that yet. Uh, but as we continue to build this out, that's certainly a piece that we will consider as well. So thank you for that.
The last thing I'll just add, especially with Blueprint, I think what I'm excited about that you'll see specifically in the innovation and performance area zone. Is the intentionality around what community schools should really look like, right? And so how do you tie it to the, what's coming out of Blueprint? How do you, the wraparound services you're talking about? If that's done really well, you hit behavior, you hit mental health, you hit all the things, including academics throughout. So I think they, it's, it's really an opportunity to do a model and for us to see if the model really works.
Okay. Uh, all right. And then board member Goins McCants.
Thank you Chair Briggs. My question was just really quick, are those school plans public? Or a summary of them or anything about what they say?
I'm not su- I'm not sure that we've made them public, but.
But typically, the school plans are sent to the state and they have a state website where anyone should be able to access those school plans. Um, but it should be very transparent. Also, um, from what I recall, um, because the school performance plans. Should be located on each school's website. If they had a CSI plan, it should be there as well. So it should be easily located on each school's website. We can follow up to make sure that, that that's done. That's a great question.
And I get to follow up with that as a part of this and the parent engagement piece. Is that specifically going to be explained to parents? Not just like, how will we see this innovation zone working out in the buildings? But what does this mean? What does this mean for my child and how this school, we expect this school to be able to progress? Because they are in this special zone.
Yes, yes, and yes. Um, and actually, all of the schools, um, I just happen to be a parent in one of our ATS I schools, for example. So I was singing the principal's praises last week because I got a notification that they were having a parent meeting to do exactly what you're talking about. I had never seen that before, so the answer is yes. And I appreciate that question as well. Because um, uh, changing outcomes takes time. So we don't want to give the perception like we're, we're gonna do this innovation zone and we're gonna see drastic results in six months or even a year. But we wanna see growth and progress and this is nicely tied to the growth model that our interim superintendent has um introduced. Is we want schools and communities to say, hey, we've seen that our, this is our baseline data for our performances. And we see that our children are growing over time.
And I think what'll be nice is this, so this team comes back in February and she'll have an opportunity to bring people from the field. Whether it's a principal, whether it's an ID, whether it's a parent who's engaged in what Dr. Collins has indicated. To talk through what's been done so far and what's that felt like, when she talked about tight and loose. And so um, you'll have an opportunity to see what it, when we go and hit the field, what's actually happening and how it's landing.
Uh, thanks so much. Uh, okay. So um, I think we're good unless there's a desire for a third round of discussions. Um, so I'll just pause and see if there any, any interest in that. Okay. Um, so I wanna say thank you all for the excellent presentations and engaging discussions. Our next meeting is scheduled for November tenth, two thousand twenty-five. There being no further business, the time is now six thirty-five PM. And the October thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five Academic Achievement Committee meeting is adjourned. Have a great evening and thank you all so much.
Thank you.